Article 12. To see what sum, if any, the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to take from the local road assistance account for the Capitol Road account. Amount received in the footnote is 21,398.
I make a motion to authorize a selectman to spend the 21,398 dollars on local road assistance.
I'll second it.
Is that mine?
Second? Any discussion?
What is the local road assistance account? Is that the same as the previous article?
Uh, no.
Right.
That is capital for the best payment is what that's being used for.
For major road.
From the state. We receive that money from the state. When we do any hot talk, we have to do a report on what we have done. They reimburse or give that back. So it's a major improvement.
We get that amount, that 21,398 comes to us from the state. We have to make a report showing the state what we spend that money on. So we have a separate account.
And what are we gonna use it for? So that's money we have to use there?
Major road repair.
Yeah.
Which would be in addition to the 21,000 that we just voted on.
That would be like hot topping.
You just need permission to use it.
Right, yes.
Any other discussion? Let us vote on the article. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article passes. Article 13. To see what sum, if any, the town will raise and appropriate to pay for winter maintenance, which includes snow removal, sand purchase, salt purchase. Recommended 94,000 dollars.
I make a motion we accept the article with the recommended amount.
I second the motion.
Who was out?
Discussion?
Where'd you come up with 94,000?
We combined the sand removal with the sand and salt purchase and combined it into one.
Any other discussion?
So how much was the, how much was the snow removal contract?
That is...
The contract is 53, 53, 56.
So it's the same as last year?
No, well this year we'll be going up to bid the three years.
Yeah, the contracts are.
The three years contract is up. It'll be going up what we did this year.
The footnote, reserve balance and snow account will be used to complete the 2013 and 2014 snow removal contract. Did you see that?
Yeah, but that, that'd go over 110,000.
John?
Uh, the reason that the expended of 87, it, it looks like we're asking for another 7,000 is because of when the bills came in and when they were actually paid. Um, it's gonna average out, the two years is gonna average out higher than the 87 that we actually spent. That one threw me also. That's why we're asking for more than the 87.
Because the actual plan is 55,000, the contract. But because of the two years that combine those together, the contract must've been sold.
You can see that we only expended 46,000, but the contract's 53. So every year, if you paid the same amount of the contract in our fiscal year, it should've been 53, but it, it didn't happen. A check wasn't written until later.
Any other discussion? Let us vote on the article in favor. And opposed? Article passes. Article 14. To see what sum, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate funds to pay for organizations. Recommended 8,813 dollars.
I make a motion we accept the article as written with the recommended amount.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? And those opposed? Article passes. Article 15. General assessment. Recommended 1,000 dollars.
I make a motion we raise 1,000 dollars.
Any discussion on the article? All those.
Can you tell me what that goes for? What does mine go for?
That's people in need. They'll come to the town if they need help with their electricity or heating and spending reheating costs this year. They have to fill out an application. They're gonna need the guidelines. It's pretty strict.
Any other discussion? Vote on the article, those in favor.
And that was with the 1,000 dollar increase above, above what's written there? Remember Brian said?
Oh, I thought you were...
The state tells you you have to raise that 1,000 dollars anyway, so you don't have much choice.
Those opposed? The article passes. Article 16. To see what sum, if any, the town will authorize the selectmen to transfer from the revenue sharing account to the general fund to apply against taxes. Footnote is balance and revert the revenue sharing as of January 31, 2014 is 28,297.12.
I make a motion we accept the article as written with the recommended amount.
Moving second, any discussion?
I think we're all wondering if he could explain it to us.
Yeah.
Well, 2014, that's a projected amount. I'm not saying we're gonna get that. Um, that's what the state put on the white item. Our balance, the auditor explains it to me. We always want to carry a balance just in case we don't get what is told by the state. So we have something to...
The state hasn't paid the bills before, attack.
That's right. So that's why we always have a balance in there. And we transferred over 38 from last year.
If you read the newspaper, you know that the, the state is always trying to either take money away from revenue sharing, uh, trying to put money back in. It's always an ongoing thing. So we, we don't ask to spend the whole amount of what they anticipate that we will get because that way we have a balance instead of a minus.
Okay, can we, let's run across the numbers. So last year, we voted 43,608.90. We didn't vote that?
Yeah, you voted it, yeah.
Was, and that was the balance on January 31 of 2013, was it? My recollection is that we usually, we bank the revenue sharing when it comes in, the next year we spend it.
Right, that must've been what we estimated last year.
Yeah, and that's what I'm wondering why would...
We only got 38.
Why we only have a balance of 28,297.12?
I don't, I don't know. It's a good question for the auditor. She's on that.
And the transfer, the transfer number means what, what they gave us last year.
Right, that's what they meant.
So if we, why don't we have 38,392.78 still in the account? Because we usually...
Because there was a, there's a balance carried forward every year. The calculations show, we estimated 43,608 last year and we only got 38. So that makes the balance only 28 instead of... We're estimating what they have told us we'll get this year.
So we did actually get 38 already, 38,392. That's what we have, but we are, we had, we were running behind, so we really only have 28,297 at the end of the year.
Yes, where's your 3,000?
Um, my question on that is, um, the amount that is in here for 2014 and 2013 is the, based on the state's fiscal year? And we're booking actually ahead. If you look at it, we're actually booking money we are not gonna get in the fiscal year we're accounting for.
Right.
Okay? I don't know how we have a balance. I honestly can't. I, I'd be interested from the auditor to know where that balance came from, because when you're booking money you're not gonna get, that leaves you in the rears. And how we have a balance, I, I do not understand.
What was the carried forward balance from last year? It should be about 33. I don't have a book in front of me.
Well, the thing is, is I think the auditor's booking it as a receivable, because we've already accounted for it. It's not in reserves.
No.
No.
It's not money sitting there waiting to be used. It's money that we've accounted for that we haven't received yet, so it's actually a receivable.
Yeah, we're about to chat today.
Want a job? Any other discussion?
This whole article, I think it's confusing. I think it should be written different anyways.
Oh, it should be broken, it should be broken down.
Yeah, I got the other book. Look at the numbers.
What you actually received and where it goes.
That's right.
Two different categories, so it's a little bit easier to...
Yeah, because this is how it's always been done.
We're gonna work on that.
Yeah.
I'm looking at, um, the last year's, let me make sure I'm...
You're looking at it right.
I'm looking at last year's report, and we had exactly the same balance.
Right.
January 31, 2013, as we've got supposedly this year. In, in past reports, it always, we had the same balance as what we keep, what we got from the state that year. So I'm confused in that one.
I can get an answer for the balance.
Any other discussion? Let's vote on the article. Should we? Should we? Should we? Every article is brought to be acted upon.
Did they say them?
No.
Do you think they're raising, yeah, if the money there, you're gonna be taxed on what...
I, I'd like to see us vote on the amount. If, if that's not what comes in, then the difference is gonna come out of fund balance. If it's over, the difference is gonna lapse into fund balance. So this number is, is okay. It's just not accurate. But I don't think it's off much, maybe a couple thousand dollars. So if it's off a couple thousand dollars too much, it's gonna lapse into our fund balance, and if it's short a couple thousand dollars, it's gonna come out of fund balance. It's not a big deal.
So voting on the 2014 amount?
The recommended amount of 38,392.78.
On the transfer amount?
Yes.
Does everybody understand that?
Yep. Now we do.
I second that.
We'll vote on the article now. All in favor? Transfer amount.
I'm not gonna believe it, but I think I'm booked as right. It came up to the same figure.
38,392.78.
And those opposed? Articles voted accepted on the 38,392.78. Article 17. See if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to procure a temporary loan or loans within the 2014, 2015 in anticipation of taxes for the purpose of paying obligations of the town such as loans to be paid during said year. Make a motion to check. Moving second, any discussion? Let's vote on the article then. All in favor? Opposed? Article passes. Article 18. To see if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to spend the amount not to exceed 3/12 of the budget amount in each category of the annual budget during the period of February 1st to March 21st, 2015, town beating.
I make a motion we accept the article as written.
I'll second it. Moving second, discussion? Vote on the article then. All in favor? No opposed? Article passes. Article 19. See if the town will fix a date when taxes shall be due and establish a rate of interest that, after that date. Recommended October 1, 2014 with an interest rate of 7%. State of Maine recommends 7%.
I make a motion we accept the article as written with the recommended due date of 30 days from commitment. And 7% interest. We're gonna get into that in the next article.
Cindy, how did you say that?
30 days from date.
30 days from commitment date. And the reason that I say that is because, um, Article 20, which we haven't addressed yet, I, I address usually because it costs the town money. It's a way to save money, but nobody wants to do away with it. The excuse that I get is because it gets taxes rolling in quicker. Well, this is another way to get taxes rolling in quicker, make them due 30 days from commitment. It's the same thing as having a discount in that 30 days.
So you're trying to amend the article?
Yes.
Okay, we need to have a second on that amendment.
No, I'm not amending it. I, I did...
You're changing the wording.
No, not. No, not. The recommended amount is just a recommendation I made to accept as written with a due date of 30 days from commitment with a 7% interest.
And that's my second.
I don't understand how that's written. What's, what's, what does she mean by amend? I don't, I'm not tracking.
That's when the, the taxes are committed to the tax collector. That's when the 30 days starts.
So what, what date is that? So that's like, what, September 1st or something?
Nope, it's gonna be sometime in July.
July.
And it'll be 30 days from that date.
One person at a time, please. I, I'm not following.
But the wording's not in the article. It's under a recommended amount.
No, no, because five people tried to answer. I didn't hear anything.
One other time, let's try it again. He'd like to have an explanation.
Okay. The reason that I say that is the 2% discount in the next article. I always try to get people to change their mind and do away with the 2%. Last year, the 2% discount cost us taxpayers 11,871 dollars. That came out of our tax dollars to pay for that discount. Okay? And the excuse for that discount is to get money rolling in quicker. So you get that money rolling in in that 30 days from the time we put taxes out till 30 days is up. And then the taxes aren't actually due until October 1st for the rest of us.
September.
Wow.
October starts interest.
Right. So if you change the date due to 30 days from commitment with the interest rate of 7%, and then we can vote down the next article, we're gonna save ourselves almost 12 grand. Why isn't it?
Okay, so this lady right here would like to speak.
I just asked a question. What, what is the date that the taxes are committed on? Is that July 1st? And we don't receive our bills until about 30 days later?
No, we didn't take them out August 1st.
Right, so about 30 days later. So technically, you get our bill, and then it would be...
We already owe interest.
We already owe interest if we, by the time we got our bill. Am I right?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, her way.
Right.
Okay.
But because we wouldn't get our bill until 30 days.
The bills should go out the day of commitment or the day after. If they're being committed on one day and not going out till 30 days, then something's wrong.
Did you mean July 31st or July 1st?
They committed July.
And the bills go out in July.
End of July. It's the end of July when we choose where our meetings are.
Right, and the bills go out directly after.
Right, so they're ready for August 1st.
And then 30 days from that day, people get a 2% discount.
So the end of August.
Right. So from the date of commitment, 30 days after that, you get a 2% discount.
Right.
So if you do 30, bills due 30 days from commitment, you're doing the same thing, but you're saving yourself almost 12,000 dollars.
Well, depends how, how you wanna interpret saving. So the people, they feel they're not saving. They, they want the 2% discount, so I don't, I don't...
Right, but we're paying for that discount.
Right, that's understood.
Right.
But everybody's voted every year, and they understand that, I'm sure, and they're accepted.
Right.
So that's, everybody's like...
This lady would just add.
Um, how much did we get in interest on taxes in the past year? I should be able to find that.
Interest, 12,165. That's, well, let's come up, I can break it down. Is it in my, it's in my salings and stuff all the other ones?
So I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting that it's a wash.
Absolutely, it is.
You're absolutely right.
The date of commitment is the date the tax assessor actually gives you that.
That commitment.
Okay, as a practical math, how long does it take to actually get the tax bills out after that happens? You can't just send it off the next day.
Yeah, it has to be the next day.
Yeah.
Does, does, does a practical...
No, within that same week we get the bills out, once it's committed and the selectmen sign it, they, they go out.
The selectmen sign it. The commitment date is the date that the tax assessor gives it to you.
Right.
So now you have to wait for the selectmen to have a meeting. Then it will take you two or three days to generate these and get them out. If they never, at least day or two days for the post office to deliver them. So how much time would we actually have to get these paid in reality? Not the idea that everybody's gonna get the bill the day after commitment. It isn't gonna happen.
I, the fall of August, you have to, we see that discount. You should have the bill.
Now, under her proposal, as I said, we could be in a situation where people have three days, five days, seven days, 14 days. What is the reality that they would have to pay their taxes under a proposal to avoid paying interest?
Just trying to figure out when we actually know what we owe the school. Sometime in June.
Right. Usually our meeting in July is when it's signed and they receive it, the select board. So the third Wednesday, so then the bills...
But the bill is made to you on the first of July.
When we, when we come to our meeting, we, he's given us a recommendation of the mill rate, and we actually have to pick the mill rate. So I don't believe it's committed until we sign our...
It's not committed until we sign the paperwork, seeing what the mill rate is worth of being.
Right, it doesn't take long.
No, it doesn't take long.
I mean, we use a day, we can have a month.
Usually. It's in the computer, and it's just like this. So you put the mill rate in.
And actually marking some in there, folded by...
I move the question.
Taxes are committed on the 24th of July.
Can you answer that?
I'm sorry?
She's trying to write.
What is the amended motion on the floor? Do away with any discount and make taxes payable within 30 days of commitment?
No.
And that's the due date, 30 days from commitment date. And it's been changed from October 1, 2014 to 30 days from commitment. And I move the question.
I second that.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna vote on the amendment, correct?
That's right.
All in favor?
You gotta vote first on the motion to move the question.
Did he get seconded?
Yeah, I think he did.
Yes.
On the, on the original article?
No, the original article was never moved. The only thing that was moved was the variant of the article.
So we're moving the question, so we vote...
Move the question on the variant of article.
All in favor?
Of moving the article.
Of moving the article.
Of actually vote, of, we're voting to vote.
The question.
Moving the question, alright.
Need a squeedle.
Opposed? Okay, now we're back to the original article.
No, no, we're gonna vote on the amendment.
We had a discussion on that?
We just need to next to vote.
We're gonna vote on the amendment. It was, man. All in favor?
Reread the, reread the amendments so everybody understands. What I have written is to accept it as written with, um, the due date of 30 days from the commitment date. Article 19.
Everybody in stand?
Yeah.
Let's move in second. Without a discussion, let's vote on it. All in favor? Oh, oh.
Raise your hands.
No. Keep trying.
Keep trying.
It wasn't amended, Peter.
You wish for all of it, give time, you're gonna vote on it. I suppose.
There we go.
I make a motion. I make a motion that we accept Article nineteen as written.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Bill and Brian.
With the recommendations. As written, we said.
As written.
We said with the recommendations as written. Discussion? Let's vote on that article. All in favor? And those opposed? On to Article twenty. See if what rate of discount, if any, the town will vote to allow on taxes paid within, in full, within thirty days of commitment. Recommended two percent. Funds should be taken from surplus.
I'll make a motion to check articles written.
Two Brian's.
Discussion? Let's vote on the article. All in favor? Opposed? Article passes. Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to accept payment of real estate and taxes prior to commitment date.
Make a motion we accept as written.
Second that.
Second. Any discussion? Vote on the article. All in favor? Opposed? Article passes. Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen on behalf of the town of Clifton to dispose of any excess town property or tax-acquired property in any manner which the board of selectmen deem to be in the best interest of the town. Move it. Move in second. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Can someone define excess town property for us?
Well, we don't have any excess town property at this time, but it would be property that would be, would become the property of the town for unpaid taxes.
So you're saying it's the same thing as town-acquired property?
Yeah.
Couldn't that be a couple trails out back there that's no good anymore?
But it could also mean if there was something here that the town owned, a piece of property, maybe we had some piece of equipment that we replaced and we wanted to sell the old one, that would also be within that. But that's, doesn't very often happen because we contract elders and just go with the guess-and-done thing.
Any other discussion?
So this is any kind of material property, the copy or the printers, or any giant or small piece of land that the town may come by, the selectmen without input from the town can just do as they will. Because we don't know what's gonna happen in the future, who may donate to the town, whatever. So I just want people to understand that that's a pretty good choice.
Right. Any other discussion?
Can I just say? If, in the past, we have had some tax-acquired property, and if you come to the selectmen's meetings, there's usually three, four, or five months of discussion before any plans are made for that piece of property. If it was something big, I'm sure, we would need to come back to the town to vote.
I just don't see provision for that.
It's not in the paperwork.
Either it's amended in some way or- It just gives the select board free will to do whatever on possible future large investments without any can say.
We like having it for-
The reason I'm, the reason I'm concerned about it is that in eighty-eight or eighty-nine, we were gonna sell this piece of land here. And my husband said, gee, town meeting, maybe we should hold on to that. Someday, we might need that for a town office or whatever. So we have this here because we didn't sell it when we were offered some money for it. He said, it means more to us as a town than that sum of money this year. And that's why I'm, you know, who knows what will come into the town, town's possession. I think we really need to be careful of giving you carte blanche. Sell it, it's okay, without coming and asking us.
Yes?
This article's been being passed by this town for as long as I've been here. And there have been no issues. And we have to trust that the board of select people will use good judgment and take our opinion into account when they do this. This is no different than what they've been doing for years.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe if I've not got my facts wrong, and I'm sure you'll correct me, but the selectman signed an easement across this property this past year. And the town received four thousand dollars for that. And the town, and the selectman didn't need to come and get the approval of the town for that?
That's what you elect us to do.
What account did that four thousand dollars go into?
The general account.
Which line item?
There's no line item. It goes into the general account, becomes a surplus. It becomes a surplus amount of money.
You established a revenue account for that or?
Yes, we did. It's what the revenue, receivables. But then it goes into what you said.
What state statute or whatever gives the selectmen the legality for giving an easement on town property?
We consulted on that.
We consulted, we consulted our municipal lawyer. And that is a bona fide-
Call the question.
That we are entrusted to do for the town.
The questions we called, we're gonna vote on the article. All those in favor? Those opposed? Three? Article passes. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to transfer the monies received from the state of Maine as the snowmobile registration refund to the Clifton Area Snowmobile Club for municipal trail development and safety issues.
Make a motion we accept the article as written.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Just a question, why is this carved out as a separate appropriation?
Help support the local club.
For the trail system.
Yes.
Turkey, I mean, in one. Just seems silly.
Well, I think it started, the town started giving away the revenues from the registration when they lowered the appropriations back a few years ago. So, and they kind of like helped them out still. They took away from here.
Yeah, this is the money that the town receives from the state on registrations of snowmobiles.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why it's different from any other vehicle, any other license you get.
Well, the excise tags that the town receives from registering vehicles stays in the town and it's basically used for road. There are things that these funds are used for. But this is a fund that you turn to us and in order for the town to give it to the snowmobile club, we have to ask the town permission to do that.
So if it's loaded down?
If it's loaded down, it's a general fund. Almost every town does this.
It helps out with this club, they don't have a clubhouse or anything like that. So it just helps in the maintenance of the trails. Yeah, what, twenty or thirty miles? My-
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two miles of trails I go through Clifton and interconnect with Milford, Olden. Oh, I have to explain it. If you don't snowmobile, you don't understand. But this, they all volunteer. We got a lot of volunteers here that help maintain this trail system.
Any other discussion? Let's vote on the article. All in favor? Opposed? The article passes. Article twenty-four, to see what sum, if any, the town will authorize the board of selectmen to transfer from the unappropriated surplus to help to pay taxes for ensuring you a recommended two hundred thousand. Move as recommended.
I'll second it.
Move in seconded. Discussion? Yes, ma'am?
I think we voted this amount of money recommended earlier. Can tell us what the sum of the appropriations is for this budget and how that compares with last?
No, what she's asking is how much we have passed altogether.
This entire budget, if everything is passed, is about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Is that what you wanted?
And how does that compare with last year's?
What is the school budget?
Not the town's school budget.
Much less is the state paying?
I don't have last year's poll. I believe it was around three fifty.
Somewhere near three fifty.
That's how you add it up. You guys don't add it up the same. Yes, ma'am?
Can you tell me the municipal appropriations this year compared to last year? Are they five percent higher than they were last year?
I haven't run the percentage, but I think-